Here, guys.
Thank you. Is there a eater on here?
Okay. It is Tuesday, March 8, 2022. We're going to call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One and a half. Medits' reports received and filed?
Yes. I have the county clerk's February 2022 fees, sheriff's February 2022 fees, reporters' February 2022 fees, and the auditors' February 2022 revenue and expenditure.
I'm glad you've been working. Commissioner Committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events.
An HBA board meeting this afternoon, planning commission meeting tonight, transportation committee meeting tomorrow morning, solid waste management district board meeting tomorrow afternoon, HBA general membership meeting tomorrow night. Eric Landwars doing the presentation. Don't think I sent you all an email if you all want to go. If anybody else wants to go, let me know. Bring along as a guest. You want to heckle Eric or?
He was on the radio this morning.
Okay, I'll go.
Talked you into it.
Yeah.
You got to do the presentation next month, though.
That's fine.
All right. I'm going to make sure they sign you up for that. Cole County Chiefs meeting Thursday night. Daylight Savings Sunday morning. St. Thomas Country Ham and Sausage breakfast Sunday morning.
Which is good.
Yeah. Don't plan on doing anything the rest of the day because you will eat too much. So, and I got to check, there's fish fries all around the place. I don't want to mention any certain ones or forget somebody. So, I think that's about it.
I think our, excuse me, our Parks Committee meeting was canceled today due to a lack of a quorum. Tomorrow, there is a, I have a Jefferson City Chamber Salute to America meeting. Thursday, a Heartland Port Authority Subcommittee meeting, and Friday morning, a Chamber Membership Subcommittee meeting.
Okay. Sunday, I presented our proclamation at the 125th anniversary of the DAR. Today, I have a meeting with CBB at 3:00, I think, on the soccer complex. The transportation meeting Wednesday, is that the one with the chamber?
Yeah.
Okay, I might go to that, too. Thursday, Leadership Jeff City, I have to speak to them at 8:00. Chiefs meeting. Sunday, St. Thomas. Monday, I've got a Cap Region Medical Center Foundation meeting. And that's all I've got. I want to introduce a guest before we go into some of our other stuff here. We have a commissioner from Montgomery County came all the way here just to see how we function, Dave Teeter. And they don't have Eastern and Western. You're first?
First and second, which is kind of north and south, essentially.
Yeah. And you're first?
I'm first.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, welcome. I hope you'll be impressed. You know, if you get bored, you can.
Like I say, a lot more activity than our commission.
Welcome. Okay. Committee board appointments, reappointment of Janet Owseley, Charles Scornia, and Michael Rehagen to the Cole County Presidential Special Services Board. And Jim Casey had asked us to put this on. I think they have all agreed to serve, so we just need to reappoint them.
Can we do this with one commission order or with?
One for each.
We've done it in one vote, though.
Yeah, we can do it in one vote.
It's all the same committee?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a.
I'll offer a motion to reappoint Janet Owseley, Charles Scornia, and Michael Rehagen to the Cole County Residential Special Services Board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Commission comments? Bids and contracts? Signing of donation agreement from St. Luke's Milk Bank.
Good morning.
And I sent them a thank you note already.
Oh, good. So, a few weeks ago, we talked about how St. Luke's is no longer going to be the milk bank. We're transferring to Indiana's milk bank, but St. Luke's had provided a freezer for us, and instead of collecting that back, they're just going to donate it to us. But they do want us to sign this agreement, basically taking responsibility of the freezer that we've had for two and a half years, I think. And Jill did look at the agreement.
So, did you answer the presiding commissioner's question as to whether or not it fit?
I did. I said that if nothing is needed, it's there. It's already installed.
Okay. Well, I just, I'm paranoid, see, after.
It's already there. We've already been using it. We just don't have to, no one's going to come and take it back. They're just going to give it to us.
And now you're partnering with the Indiana. Okay.
That's all right. I didn't bring it up on my computers. Make a motion to accept the agreement of St. Luke's Hospital for transfer of the equipment.
Transfer the ownership of the equipment. We already had the equipment.
Ownership is 99% of it.
Second.
Transfer the ownership of the equipment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Do we have any unfinished business? Okay. New business accounts payable review?
I'd ask for approval of accounts payable pending review.
Who does that one? Okay. Make a motion to approve accounts payable upon review.
Aye, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Okay. And then we're going to deviate a little bit from our agenda because Mr. Haldeman has to go listen to the judges speak. So, we're going to do the approval of the ARPA application first, Debbie, if that's okay.
Yesterday, Debbie, Kristen, Melissa, and we had Teresa from BKD on the line, excuse me, to discuss the ARPA issue. And I'll tell you that our discussion drifted away from an application to a needs assessment form. It's just that maybe it's just language, but if we went to a needs assessment form rather than an application form, the task of the ARPA Advisory Committee would be to review the submitted needs assessments forms and suggest a ranking of the importance, furnish input to the commission regarding the funding allocations. We would encourage all organizations seeking funding to complete the needs assessment form, which I think you have a pack, you have a version of it with, or you're about to get one. You'll see that it mirrors the old CARES application about who you are, where you are, a little bit about your history of your organization, authorize the contact persons, the amount of funding required, expenditure category, on and on. I'd like the commission to approve the needs assessment form today and open the assessment period perhaps for 30 days. We could, we could release that form today. It's an online form and have the advisory committee meet within two to four weeks or whatever's the best timing to.
I think we have a meeting on the 15th, but.
Well, we do have one scheduled. I don't think.
I don't know if we.
If you have to put that in today, I think you can move that out and see what kind of information.
Maybe to add to the discussion, yesterday afternoon, DED, Department of Economic Development, released an FRFI, Request for Information. They're going to issue RFIs to assess needs for ARPA-funded projects. We received that DED RFI email this morning. I told several of you, it was almost like our conversation yesterday morning was bugged, and when we came up with the term needs assessment, somebody else heard it and said, "That sounds good. Let's do it here, too." So, the idea, maybe it was original with us, maybe it wasn't. I guess suspect it wasn't, but it's just, we wanted to get away from the term application to needs assessment. That's, we drifted in that direction, so that's my report on yesterday's meeting and what's, what we developed by tweaking the application form a little bit to a needs assessment form.
So, at one time, we were talking about adding it today, which is the 8th, and then a meeting set for March 15th, so we would want to close the application that week before, so March 18th, or March 8th, I'm sorry, or close it March 15th.
April.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yes, I'm sorry. So.
That's a quick turnaround.
I was going to say, today's March 8th.
We're not normal around here. Let's get stuff done. Okay. Okay, so April, April 8th, then, would be the 30-day?
It's 30 from today, I guess, so.
We can always extend it if we need to. There's nothing saying we have.
And we're also, I think, using the term initial needs assessment form because there are going to be changes, evolve over time. They may change rules on us at the federal level, so using the term initial sort of gives you the hint that there may be subsequent forms.
Yep, there can be, so. So, looking at the initial round deadline would be April 8th.
We can do that.
Okay.
If you guys agree to the wording on that link that Melissa came up with.
Yeah. Thanks for going through that. I know we had some other input from the advisory committee on emails and so.
Yeah, we've had some.
Jeff, I think it fits a bit into your, your email this morning that went out about ranking and scoring, but that would, you know, the rank, we learn about ranking from these assessment forms and work into scoring at some other, as we transition down to the actual dollars.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah.
Can we put some of this information as information only? It wasn't required. Eventually, we'll have things that would be required if we need to.
Okay. I think we, do we ask about matching in there?
Yes.
Yeah, so we, you know, when the, when the folks respond to us, we've asked if there, if there's other sources of funding and if they're matching to make our dollars go further. It's a consideration that we want to know about.
Yeah. No, I'm good. I want to get this, I want to, I want to get this on our website, so.
If you're going to have public services, you will.
Yeah. And then if Jeff can announce in the paper that the application is now on our website.
Needs assessment.
Needs assessment.
That's okay, Sam. It took me all afternoon.
Yeah. Needs assessment form.
Yeah, if you want to make the motion, then how you want it?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the ARPA needs assessment form developed by the, by the staff and release the online version for interested parties to submit response.
And a due date, April 8.
With the due date of April 8.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The other thing I would ask, do you want the committee to meet next week, or do you want me to send a notice for a couple of weeks or?
I think we'd have to, I think we'd have to wait, let's see the volume we get back. We, if we met on the 8th, I don't know if we'd really have, well, wait a minute, I'm sorry, say it again, next week.
15th is when we've got it.
I think we push that back.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll cancel that, and then I'll bring it back up after we get somebody's in and see where we're at. And we've, Brian has set up an email address for you to be returned to, so then you have to let me know who all you want on that.
Well, I think, you know, if we circulate the responses to the commission and to the ARPA Advisory Committee, they'll have a head start for the next meeting.
I'll probably do it in a month.
That's right.
At, you know, at least the end of every week, not every time I get one.
Right. Okay.
I think we need to figure out what capacity we want the advisory board to serve as well. Are we going to have them help review and to score them, or have they done their part already? I see it as, I would like them to score it as well, and we take that into consideration.
Maybe your term is score, my term is rank, instead of, this is so subjective.
Yeah.
That to convert it to an objective score is difficult.
Yep. And that's why I like that rubric that I sent you all. We use that for solid waste management district, and some of it's weighed, and we can talk to advisory board and say, you know, if, what kind of effect is it going to have long-term? Maybe that has more weight than short-term and such, so I think that's something, it's just a starting point that we can go off of.
Okay.
So, I guess we, let's work through that and push the meeting off, like Harry said.
Yeah.
Figure that out. Try to at least get us through agreeing on something and then go from there.
Okay.
Okay. Yes, sir.
So, is there a difference with internal requests or?
You're at the end of the line, John.
This is for Eric.
You know, you.
Asking for a friend.
No, I think, you know, internally, we wouldn't say, Sheriff, you're not getting what you wanted because you didn't submit the assessment form. We'd never do that. So, we, we know what, you feed us information, you and Eric and the other directors furnish us information, the other, like the officials, on a regular basis, so it'll be in the mix for certain. But if you, if you want to, I mean, you certainly can, but you've already given us letter, a kind of a joint letter from you two, right?
So, that's the question, would you, would you like that proposal laid out?
I think if you could put it in the same format, it will be easier for them to review, so it may just be copying, taking your narrative into this, but I think then they have everything in the same format to review and compare.
That might be a whole nother category that we add to the top of, internal, external.
Yes.
Because I think it's a good idea, Kristen says, have you all submitted, because we may have, well, we will have public works, EMS, sheriff, health, IT's going to probably want something, you know.
We could copy that form and.
Sorry, Brian.
We could take a copy of that form and then make adjustments for internal purposes if we need to.
So, it's a timeframe that I'm, that we've been talking about, remember from the beginning, since I think the first email I sent you guys was November. It's a timeframe that we're concerned about because of the lag time on some of these projects we're wanting to do. 10 months is one of the projects alone. So, I mean, I get where you're coming from. I understand if you want us to put it in that, I understand that, but how, how long? Because this is, this is, we're going to push into next year.
I was just looking at the form to see if we had something that addresses that, but I think that's part of the info you give us, that you need it and it takes X order, order fulfillment receipt of to get here, so, you know, the money has to be encumbered by the end of '24. I'm not suggesting you're going to have to wait till that, but, and paid, and paid for by the end of '26. This is, this is a marathon. It's not a sprint, but, but you guys actually are sort of on the front side of the, of the attempt to obtain ARPA dollars, simply because you were, you've already furnished us some of that. We have a general idea, a better than general idea of what you're asking for from the letter.
And I think the big thing with the 30 days was to see what's out there in the community other than what's inside, and then to look at them all at the same time, and then maybe have that committee not only rank them based on what the need is in the community and inside, but then to help us with the buckets of money of where it should go. And that's what, I think after 30 days, they'll have a clearer picture of what the needs are, maybe, plus what needs are here. I have your needs and I have public works, so I don't really have any other projects besides those two.
Well, Eric's in on.
And those will come out of our internal, our internal bucket, internal pot.
We're going to be paying double money, though. You even understand that, because we can't just go to a new CAD system and stop the other one. We have to build it, we have to implement it, and then whatever that contract falls in, then we're going to be paying for two different systems. That's the reason why we've been pushing you so hard on getting this funding and making this, and trying to get this, this project moving, because we're going to end up paying twice the money.
Well, not twice the money. To two, you're paying money to two parties.
Right. I'm sorry. Yeah, you're correct.
It may not be twice as much, but, but then again, the lead time, and you have a contract that expires on a certain date, in a perfect world, the new one would, the new equipment's ready to hook up and run and take off the day the other one stops, but that probably not.
Yeah, but you can't do it.
I know.
It's got to go, it's got to overlap.
Sure.
So, if we implement today and we finally get to go live in February, it looks like maybe January of next year, maybe, then we're going to have to keep the other systems on board till at least March, April timeframe. So, we're trying to take care of it this budget year, so we don't have to worry about it next budget year.
Okay.
When your request didn't encompass all of this stuff in one request, though?
Yes.
It wasn't just the radios.
Well, it's the radios and the.
But you also have some ventilators and some different stuff.
Yes, infrastructure and stuff. And if the radios just aren't for.
I think when you look at what you're talking about, separate, if it's something we need to jump on right now, that we have to look at maybe taking it from contingency, and if we do award ARPA money towards it, then it would just go back to rebuild contingency.
Well, it's going to come out of, of our internal.
Not if we don't use ARPA money for it.
We discussed that, and let's be straight, if we did it with contingency money and then determined we could have, should have, would have done it with ARPA money, we just replenish the contingency and call it ARPA, right?
Yeah, the only restriction there is going to be, we do quarterly reporting to the federal government, so, you know, if you're a finisher in one quarter and we don't pick it up until later, the tax is going to be an issue.
All right. I think we can make it work, Sheriff.
Okay. So, we've approved that. It's, oh, I wanted to introduce, too, we have a representative from Congressman Luke De Meyer's office. I'm sorry, I forget your name, but when we need, we need federal money, we just go to him and he'll have Blaine give it to us, so.
You got cards.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, what was your name?
Leave a bunch of your cards here.
Hey, go down, drive down to High Street, Vada, and then go underneath of it. Look up as you drive underneath of it. You'll find a lot of need right there. You can get something for that.
One of the calls for Eric, because he was on the radio this morning.
Yeah.
Concerned that, Vada.
Yeah, that's a big.
But welcome, anyway. I'm sorry, I didn't.
No worries.
Yeah. But leave lots of cards. Okay. I think Carnegie's going to take a little bit. How about purchase of cardiac monitor mounts with Tecnamount System? Eric, I'm going to get you in and out of here.
No worries.
You've got.
Morning. So, this is a mounting system to mount the cardiac monitors to the ambulance cots where they will live permanently. Keeps them up off the patient, secures them. The mounts are load-rated so that if the ambulance was in an accident, that 15-pound piece of equipment wouldn't become a projectile in the back of the ambulance. This was approved in our capital budget for this year for an amount of $22,000. I have a quote here with Tecnamount Systems for $21,435. That would be the purchase of 11 of the actual mounting arms plus eight receiver bases which, which hold the monitor in and of themselves, so just ask that you approve this today.
Yes, in your budget, so.
Make motion to approve the cardiac monitor mounts with Tecnamount System.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
And I'm going to, I'm going to jump around again, because I know that parking and parking lot overlays and all this, discussion of recorder of deed software. Judy, I'm going to get you in and out.
Okay. Good morning.
Good morning.
Basically, I just wanted to give you a heads up to see if you had any questions, because we need to bid out our software, and I spoke with Jessica, and we're going to try and do that in March. We started the process about two years ago, looking at different software companies, and I've researched it. I've been to other recorder offices and reviewed it, and I also had Brian sit in a meeting with us and a couple other vendors to make sure we are good with all of the IT part of it. We really are forced to move as soon as we can. We've had some security issues. We've just had some other concerns. That could be discussed in a, in a private setting if you choose to do so. So, I wanted to give you some heads up on that and see if you have any questions. I know Mr. Otto has asked me in the past if our software had the capability of putting the assessor's parcel number in it, which would be moving forward in technology to do so, and we're looking at software that will have that capability and other capabilities that I feel like would move us forward in the technology world. But if you have a lot of IT questions, I would have to have Brian come help me here.
How many bids you think we're going to get on it?
I'm planning to pay for it out of the recorders' fund, so.
Who all knows those kinds of software? Do we have?
I'm looking for the companies.
Yeah. Do you have a bunch of them that you think are going to?
I have four that I've looked at, and I personally narrowed it down to two.
Okay.
But I am planning to fund it through the recorders' fund.
Unless you want to write me a check.
Brian, do you have any feedback on it since you've been?
I talked to Judy, just looked at that this morning, and I told her that we'll get to the details of it and things like that, but right now, this is more of a, we're getting ready to kind of start looking at, put this out, so.
Okay. So, we don't need to take any action. Okay.
You got new ARPA down there, too? Looks very nice.
I'm happy. It looks very nice. Thank you very much.
I do want to comment, and I like the idea of trying to get these, these three offices to interplay with one another, the assessor, collector, recorder.
Right.
You know, when we, when we look at, at real estate in your office, is it book and page is sort of the, the way you find things, or you go and?
We search by name. Typically, that's how recorder offices are set up. We record and can search by book and page if they have a book and page. Every document receives a book and page and a timestamp on it. The difficult thing about having the three offices work together is everybody has their own specific information that's pertinent to their office, and that's not always, I mean, I'm looking at software that is specific to recorder functions, and it may not comply with the assessor needs, except for maybe parcel, but values and other things that you look at the assessor's office for is not something we really track. So, there are some differences in how the office functions.
And I can understand you have different functions there, but when you're talking about a piece of property, all three of you should call it by the same name.
Which is?
The parcel, generally, the parcel number at the, when we're talking about real estate.
Right.
A parcel number to a collector, to an assessor, and to a recorder, that ought to be something that fits.
That connects it.
That fits hand in glove.
Us receiving that, in the past, we've never, that was never a concern for the recorders.
I know.
And that parcel number can change, and how do we keep track of that?
Well, the parcel, I mean, if you have a piece of, you do subdivide parcels, and you have multiple parcels where you once had one.
Right.
Or whatever. That's true, but, but as a general rule, you don't, you can change an address, but you don't change the parcel number. I mean, if you changed the parcel number, Larry Vincent would go screaming out of here with his hair on fire, and so would the assessor, because.
We don't always have a parcel number.
I know you don't.
On the documents we receive for recording.
I know. That's what, that's the problem.
Right.
So, Blaine's description is really the base of where all of that goes in touch process of.
The legal description.
Our legal description.
Like a new, a new subdivision that's going to create a bunch of new parcel numbers that don't currently exist.
Correct.
There are kind of issues with that.
But if you look at, if you look at the bills that the collector sends out, the, the information the assessor has, they have legal descriptions, you know, 75 feet, one direction, and whatever.
They do not have complete legal descriptions.
Well, yeah, but, you know, I don't want to get into the weeds here. What I'm, what I'm looking for is those three offices fit together.
Two connected. Okay.
As opposed to silos.
Well, moving forward, if we have a parcel number on a document, the software I'm looking at has that capability.
Good.
But in our office, I mean, if we have the parcel and we have the capability, we will put it in there.
Right.
But we search by name and legal description, and as Melissa was saying, that's, we may not have all of those parcel numbers, but if we have them and we can put them in the new software we're looking at, then we will do that.
Okay.
When is a parcel number assigned, do you know?
Well, it's whenever the split is made, so when Paul gets-
It's after they record it, though.
When Paul gets a land description from the recorder's office, he'll get the land-
So if I have 60 acres, and I wanna take a five-acre tract off, I split it out, it gets approved by the planning commission, it gets approved, or gets recorded, and then Paul gets it?
Paul at the assessor's office, Paul draws out that new land description and splits-
Cause I would agree with what Harry says, they need to be able to talk to each other, at least have a bridge.
And about-
There's more than one way to find out.
And on that parcel number, you know, when one lot becomes two lots, you just don't start over with crazy numbers for that new lot. It's gonna be identical to what it was until you get out to about the last subset of .001, .002, they start to break out. So they still, they're still in the first, you know, first two digits, the second two digits, the third, next four digits, whatever they are, they're all identical, and then at the end, you get a, it's like a junior or a senior in John Smith III, you know, you don't change your names, and anyway.
It's just us obtaining it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Alright.
Nothing's easy.
We'll go back to our agenda. Carnegie Building Parking Improvements Discussion. Patrick, are you it, or?
He just walked up.
He saw it coming.
He did it on purpose. Here he is, Brian.
Debbie, you want these?
I don't know, just stay there. Got some handouts here if you need them, but okay.
Is that what you emailed?
Yes.
Okay.
So-
I don't think they're attached to the agenda. Is this what you emailed? Oh, okay. Okay, there's open email.
Yep.
Another tree, Eric, another tree, poor thing, poor thing.
Thanks, Sheriff.
So I gotta put this in my parking file? I'm about ready to give it up to somebody else. Who's the new guy, Harry?
So Patrick and I were talking a couple weeks ago about wanting to get the discussion of the Carnegie Building improvements back on the, back on the front burner. Primary reason for us is it relates to parking lot overlays that Matt Pringer and I have been working on, as we've talked about previously last year and budgeted for it. We're going to look at overlaying the county facility parking lots, and this rolls into Pringer and making some decisions on that, or I'm sorry, the Carnegie Building project, making some decisions on that, which will dictate what we do on some of the overlays. So I'll turn it over to Patrick and Paul to maybe go through the two options on the Carnegie Building, and then we can roll the parking lot discussion into that.
So a while back, we had the meeting and met with you guys on site and discussed the options, basically that we were down to two options. The first was basically replacing the wall in a different location, reconfiguring the parking a little bit, and getting all the parking lot on basically the level of what the basement of the Carnegie Building is now. And then the second option was to actually look at a parking deck and have parking on the first level, basically even with the lower level of the Carnegie Building, and then have a pull-in parking spot underneath that deck and get some additional parking there, and that would be accessed by a sidewalk pedestrianway, so it'd be similar to what you got now, but a little bit different configuration. You've got approximately 25 spaces out there now, 18 of those are basically what I would call standard parking spaces, or seven spaces that are being doubled or tripled stacked right now. The first, first option that we presented to you, you basically get back those 18 spaces, and you'd have all basically standard parking at that point. The second option with the parking deck, you could get up to 30 or 31 spaces, depending on how all that worked out in the end. So you gain about six over six, five or six over what you've got now. The first option, we were estimating the cost of the retaining wall to be about $120,000, and then additional site work with the ADA ramp and things up front being about $200, $250,000 addition to that, so total cost for that one's in the $400,000 range. On the parking deck option, when we got an estimate on that, we were looking at about a cost of $550,000, and then you add the $200, $250,000 on that for the additional site work, and you're close to $800,000. So a big difference on costs, and now I think we're just here to look for direction and see what you guys have thought on that.
The rough calculation, or the calculation you have is it's 400 and 800?
Yeah, approximately.
And for the difference of 400, we pick up five to six parking spaces?
Over what you have now.
Right.
Standard, what I would call a standard parking spot, nine by 19 or nine by 20, you wouldn't have the substandard parking spaces, so I guess you'd be looking at really picking up 13 real, real spaces at that point.
Are 13, okay. It's nice to have more parking, I think this is a bit too expensive for it, and I do wonder about a deck there and what's under the deck. The traffic of pedestrians that sometimes stay under the deck is an issue?
Yeah, I mean, you know, if you look at the information I gave you before, we've got a little bit extra, you know, we've got, we probably have an MEP architect involved, we're gonna wind electrical underneath there for some good lighting and things like that, so I think that would be, some of that stuff would deter that. You'd obviously have a spot where, kind of a small corner or what have you there, that you could potentially have some squatters or whatever be in those spots.
Oh, we would, I would guarantee.
And a deck, the area below, you'd have to walk up the hill to get to the Carnegie Building, there wouldn't be steps or anything like that coming from down below.
Could be the driveway that took you in there?
We would, if you look at that option I showed you, I actually did draw a set of steps-
We did, okay, my bad.
On from, you'd basically walk out to the alleyway and then walk around the wall that would support the parking deck and then come up to the lower level of Carnegie Building, so.
I, I think we just need to option one, but that's, I'm just one, but it's, you know, hopefully somewhere down the road, we'll have more parking, so.
What do we pay for parking places? $30 a month?
Forty.
Forty a month?
Forty-five.
Forty-five a month?
Different prices. I think I was supposed to call it 45 right now?
I like option two, but 400,000 more. If we knew we were gonna get some of that other, like the Dancers Alley?
Mm-hmm, I know.
You got your crystal ball out?
Well, I'm gonna, Friday Coffee, the mayor and Sonny Sanders are going to speak on Capitol Avenue, so I'm gonna go to that, and-
Well, I'm not gonna wait on them, though, if something's gonna happen, we'd have to have it sooner than later, cause we gotta make this decision pretty quick so we can start with that old project over there, so.
I think if my math is right, the 400,000, it gets us 13 parking spaces, $61,000 of space, which is, it's, that's even a bunch higher than what the city had talked about, you know, some time ago about doing a parking garage, weren't they? And that $40,000, and that, that was deemed expensive, I think, at that time, so.
I think really the issue here is you've got, you know, you're basically building the same retaining wall for both options, and then it's just a matter of whether you're gonna build a deck on top of it or not.
Right.
And, yeah, I mean, you have planning budget for garage parking, you know, you could be anywhere from that $20,000 to $40,000 of space, but given the fact that you've gotta build the wall and then build the deck on top of it, you're kinda doubling up there, so.
Due to the cost and the payback from saving 40, 50, or $60 a month per space, I think the math takes me to option one.
I agree.
Unfortunately, yeah, I think you're right, cause I really like the idea of getting some more parking over there and using that area, but at that price tag, I don't know if it's worth it, so.
Well, if the old jail comes down, we're gonna have some additional parking there until we decide what we're gonna do with, but the courthouse.
Looking at building all in somewhere else, and you're gonna lose spots, so I think that'd be a watch, so I think it sounds like we just proceed with option one.
Number one, right? So that's our direction, do we need anything more than that for the, then we can move over to the overlay, so you can plan the overlay accordingly?
You guys might need to do a supplemental agreement on the original engineering contract.
Yeah, and I think part of that was we were waiting to see, you know, cause each of these, you know, you're not just costing, you're not just talking about construction cost, you're talking about design cost too, so each of these had a little bit different design costs on them, so now that we got direction, I think we can get a final proposal party, I'd probably end to get that approved through a supplemental, and then proceed.
Okay.
So one thing to add to that at Carnegie, if you look at the, look at the plan there, the old alleyway going down below to the pit, right now, it's not shown as anything being done with it. We had originally planned to overlay all that area. Just in talking with Patrick and Paul and Matt, we think probably the best bet is to do that in concrete, since we're doing concrete around the whole facility anyway. Asphalt in there would be a little complicated to get it in there anyway, so I'd recommend adding that to the project, and then everything at Carnegie is all concrete, and we don't have to try to maintain an asphalt pavement, overlay it, and then maintain it for a long time, so that's the direction I would go with that. And that kinda rolls into the parking lot discussion.
Okay.
So Matt, you wanna chime in a little bit too on this? So this, these are some numbers that we put together last year, and then Matt began working on it. He's currently working on the overlay bid, to bid the overlay and chip seal and all that work, our annual overlay, and we had discussed last year about putting this, just bidding it with our package for, just to get the best price possible. And so he went through what last year's numbers were and kinda cleaned things up and updated it. So I'll get the easy ones out of the way. The health department, that's just a seal coat and cracked seal, pretty simple, but it's time to do that, that is needed now. The Pringer Center, there's a little bit of concrete work we wanna do there, there's some islands that are a little odd, so we wanna take those out, connect it with curb and gutter, and then overlay, mill and overlay the whole parking lot, that will actually gain a few spaces in doing that, plus it'll make that parking lot a lot easier for long-term maintenance. So that price, the health department was 13,000, the Pringer Center's 23,000, the Sallyport Parking Lot, the new lot that we acquired last year, the agreement was that we would overlay that this year, and that's roughly 13,000 to do that. And these prices all, they include striping as well. Now, that's something we could potentially do in-house, but just generally speaking, it might be best just to bid that with the whole project. So we get down to the courthouse annex, and the library annex are 209 Adams. We'd like a little direction where to go on that. The courthouse annex, right now, we're looking at a seal coat and cracked seal, and then there's also a little bit of work on the alleyway between the courthouse, parking lot, and the Methodist Church gym building, that we would wanna do that to tie in some things, just due to some pavement deficiencies right in that area. But the main thing with that parking lot, we don't wanna, I don't think we wanna spend that much money on it, just with the idea that the jail could come down and there could be some modifications in the near future there, so parking lot seal would be what we'd recommend right now, not getting too carried away with what could be an overlay, mill and overlay. What's your all's take on that, is, are you thinking within the next five years possibly doing something in there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Aye.
So we definitely wanna just do a seal coat, just to prolong it, to get us by until a major construction project might necessitate doing an overlay for the complete parking lot, so that's why-
I think if we don't do something with the old jail, it's gonna come down on its own, so.
So we'll do a seal coat on that, and then we get to 209 Adams. Originally, we were thinking just a seal coat, but that parking lot is in pretty bad shape, and the discussion last week, y'all were talking about the parking spaces and how that coincides with the library patrons and whatnot, and if we're thinking that that parking lot could be as it is for 10 years or more, being that we wouldn't, the new project you did there at the 209 Adams, the old building there to make that kind of a warehouse, storage, and office for Greg, if we keep that like it is for 10 years or more, then we probably wanna go ahead and overlay that lot, mill and overlay. If we're thinking less than 10-year plan on that, then we just do a seal coat just to get us by, so what we're leaning towards, what we're kinda hearing from, you know, where we think things are going, is probably do an overlay on that and get that completely cleaned up, address the-
Well, if we would acquire like Dancers Alley, and we make that parking, would we do better just to do?
Doesn't affect us, does it, much?
Not too much, maybe just a little bit on the edge.
Okay.
If you were to take all that out and make a parking lot kind of around the 209 Adams building, you could probably utilize what we got there and not really impact it that much.
Okay.
I think a seal coat, it'll buy you some time, you know, but that's money that if you're gonna do an overlay, you know, relatively soon, you're just kinda putting money into something that you're gonna replace anyway, so. I guess the question that we have is with the 209 Adams building, beyond 10 years or 10 years or so, is that a good plan to think that that's probably gonna stay as it is?
I think the building probably will.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, you know, if we acquire more property, again, that's probably gonna just be parking for the immediate future, cause we don't have money to, to build on it, so.
So you're saying that a seal coat and striping would get us 10 years?
Probably not that long, maybe five.
You're probably looking at five on a seal coat. The problem with that parking lot is it's starting to get pretty rutted up from where everybody parks, so short-term, a seal coat will get you by, long-term, we're gonna do something more substantial, just to address all the rutting, the major cracks in it. And if you want it to last longer, we would have to do an overlay or a mill and fill of some sort.
Well, I think it's gonna remain a parking lot for the foreseeable future, so.
That's kinda where I see it right now, I don't, I don't know if we ever talked about if, even if we get additional-
Yeah.
Buildings or whatever, that we would do anything different to, maybe add on to the parking, if anything.
Yeah, add on to it.
I do wanna talk about the, when we get ready to do that, whichever way we go, about moving some parking places around and stuff so that maintenance can get in and out there with their truck and trailer, maybe we don't lose as many spots, maybe we move them over so they have a direct shot or something, I mean, that's a different conversation too.
Yeah, we'll re-stripe it to accommodate Greg and all that other stuff. We met with, Debbie and I met with the library yesterday too, so I think, you know, they need patron parking, but I think, again, it needs to be signed better, their sign's really confusing, so.
So what I'm hearing is that mill and fill, that parking lot, basically clean, it'll be a brand-new parking lot for all practical purposes, stripe it and get things exactly how we need it for the 10-year plan or more.
That's what I would do.
Okay.
If it's only gonna last five years, I think that's what I would do, and we're planning on keeping it that way.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm with that too.
Okay.
I think we have enough information, I guess the only question at this point would be budget numbers, or I think we're okay with that, or?
We didn't put anything specifically in the-
It'll be capital, right?
These numbers, I know we discussed it last year during- These numbers, I, I know we discussed it last year during budget time. I, I think uh for the health department, we need to do this now, that's a newly overlay less than five years ago, but it, it needs to be done or we're gonna be in a make law long-term, a lot of maintenance issues.
That ELC ED contract that I have allows for some building renovations, I wrote myself a note to check to see if I could pay for a parking lot overlay, so I'll check on that to see if I can work that into that contract. But I don't know.
Okay.
We are gonna do the Pringer Center.
Pringer Center definitely needs it.
Okay.
Sally Port definitely needs it.
Yeah, okay.
And another good thing about this, once we get all these done, we'll have it into our pavement management program and we can track these from here on out and do the right things at the right time to keep them in good shape and not let them get to the point that some of them are now, so we'll be able to get something there. The total number's here, about ninety-one thousand.
That's with the mill and fill.
With the mill and fill at, at two oh nine Adams.
So when you get ready to do that, we're gonna have to get creative with the rest of our parking and a little heads up.
We will probably, I don't know if we can do it to where we require the work on a weekend, I mean, we can, it's just might cost.
We can, it costs more, it's kinda like doing night work.
We might wanna discuss a little bit of that as we get a little closer.
But I mean, what kind of timeframe are you looking on for this parking lot here that would put people out for two days or two weeks?
August, August timeframe, um seal coat, it's a day, mill and overlay, probably the same a day, depends on how big it is.
There's plenty of parking in Dick City.
So the health department.
You just have to walk.
Uh, you know, I mean, you can't.
The health department, we can do half at a time.
Okay, so they can't be.
It'll probably take a week or so for the health department.
The bad part is the driveway going in, we only have one driveway, could you put a driveway out the back to?
But they have, you have that time to keep egress and ingress.
Okay.
The courthouse here, you know, if we sit, you're looking at a day or two for cracked sealing and then the seal coat, so two, maybe three days, striping's gonna be another day, so, you know, you figure a week per parking lot, but we can stagger it to where they're not, all of these are done at site.
Okay.
Okay.
Just a quick question about Pringer, uh this is the stadium side of Pringer, is the other lot in, is that a concrete lot?
It's concrete.
Okay.
It does need a little repair work, um we have a concrete repair services bid out right now, um where we could, as we're contracting some of our stuff, uh we could have them do a little repair work on that, it's minimal.
Okay.
We've been sealing that one for a while now, putting Band-Aids on it, so.
That parking lot's a manager.
Yeah.
It's, it's about due.
Yes.
And we, we got pretty much what we were gonna get out of it, so. But I think we just, we need plenty of heads up when they wanna do it. I mean, there's, there's parking that you can either pay if you don't wanna have to walk, but I need to exercise so I can park down at the corner of Lafayette and High Street and walk.
Uh not, not to just spend more money, is there, is an opportunity to pick up a few more spaces at, on the stadium side there?
Uh, at Pringer?
Yeah.
Yeah, I told you, we're gonna.
With an entrance. What about, what about uh an entrance into that lot from that side street?
The side road or the road going up to um Y?
Um yes, I guess that's where it goes.
I don't, I don't think you'd really gain anything there, there's, there's two islands on the south side of that that we're gonna take out and.
Okay.
Straight line the curb and gutter, it'd make it a lot easier to plow snow, plus it's just chopped up up front, you'll gain at least two spots there.
Probably four.
What about making it bigger, would that be possible?
How much money you wanna spend? I think we're probably locked, locked into size right now as it is.
On the south side, it really drops off, so you'd be looking at quite a bit of fill and raise that all.
Okay.
Okay, we gotta keep going till we got five minutes more before Jeff loses.
Christie mentioned um egress.
Yes.
Is that something we can look at too, would that be worth looking at?
That definitely is something that can be done, um I wouldn't recommend trying to get it done now, just, it's just gonna take time to, to design.
Maybe look at that when we decide to mill and fill that, do all that one, cause we're just sealing that one, right?
We're just sealing that parking lot, so.
Okay, that'd be something I think we need to look at when we decide.
Do that as a standalone project and maybe, maybe plan it for next year, unless you really wanna do it this year, we can, it's just.
Well, if we're sealing, then it gives us five years, so we got some time to try to look at, see what it's gonna cost, I think it'd be something to maybe look at.
Well, it takes us money, yeah, it, it wouldn't be hard.
I can get out of there, all techs full, drive, cut the curbs. I'm telling you, if, if something happens down there, you only have one way in and out.
If the building's on fire and we're all parked at the other end, yeah, all of us would more drive, we'll, we'll get out, but.
Well, those Dodgers can get out.
Well, we can, we can maybe look at, at the state's uh.
Look up the old port anytime.
That is health-related, it's, yeah, so.
We do need to look at some grants, there's a lot of money flying around out there.
We use some state money to, to do that.
We have federal money too, look at doing that.
Yeah, okay, hey, talk to Blaine, we get, we oughta be able to do it for less than a million.
Did he try to trick you and told you he was coming up here for a pie or something? That's how we get the sheriff up here, then we ask him for money.
Okay.
So real, real quick, to tie back to the Carnegie.
You about lost us there.
They're gonna, yeah, just, they'll do a supplemental agreement to pay for the extra design work, get that project rolling and after, after that, you're pretty much ready to bid once it's designed, so a couple weeks to a month, maybe.
One other thing on that note, is that this is the last meeting you're gonna see, Patrick, he is leaving us for Browner Pastures, I don't know why you'd wanna do that, so you're, you get me back, I know you've missed me.
I'm sorry you can't go, Patrick.
That's probably why you're mad, cause you gotta deal with us now.
Exactly.
Go to the county. All right, well, good luck, Patrick. All right, thank you, guys.
Okay, Luke, you got four minutes before Jeff loses his concentration.
Oh, I don't know, this one.
He said he's got an hour, you know, he's good for an hour, so.
We're talking strategy for an hour.
Do a Father Medina, do a Father Medina presentation.
Yeah, I think he's gonna whittle it down a little bit and.
Yeah, it, you know, I, I can move as, as fast as you'd like, but you know, as far as some of the value of the content, it's gonna get just somewhat washed away if I try and breeze over it too quick, so.
As long as Jeff, I can poke him every now and then, oops.
This is round two for, for Jeff, so he, he's familiar with the content, but um is there a timeframe you want me to try and stick to? I mean, just.
I, I told him try to keep it around ten minutes, but there was a lot of information on, if you wanna go through each one of them fairly quick and then we can go back if y'all have questions, because the presentation at the JCR EP board meeting was.
It was an hour and a half, but.
You're basically our last, so.
Yeah, so I imagine it's gonna be a quick exit for a lot of folks in here, but I'll try not to go uh into too much in depth, but appreciate the chance to give an update.
Wants to move over here if he wants to.
I wanna clicker, or if you want me to. Very, not too many slides, so.
Yeah, there he is.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Okay, uh so just a, a quick where we left off um last quarter, giving the updates, so you know, the, from coming on board and uh the first couple of months was really laying out some of the strategy, vision, um kind of the core objectives of JC Rep moving forward. So just kind of starting where we ended previously, you know, continuing to focus in on, you know, building the organization, but also kind of our lanes of, of focus are gonna be, you know, primarily in infrastructure, community development and, and business development type activities, so this is what I'm gonna update on is progress towards these key strategies. So one that I'll, I'll go through uh pretty quick here is, you know, from the organization perspective, just getting ourself structured and getting kind of the, the back-of-the-house items in place, so you know, policies, uh insurance, uh accounting, you know, more of the marketing, branding, website, logo, letterhead, uh you know, working on a kind of a permanent office location and getting that squared away, so a, a lot of progress, a lot of effort as this is a new startup nonprofit, so um don't wanna diminish the, the need for us to become a, you know, a strong, well-built organization, so there's been a lot of activity in that front, uh you know, over the past couple of months. Now, kind of getting into some of the project updates and this is where, I'll, I'll touch on them pretty quick, but we can, we can go into as much depth as you'd like, uh actually last time was here, uh you know, presented on the uh multimodal facility that um I'm happy to announce, as of last Monday, that thing got submitted to EDA, uh I appreciate Eric and, and Paul, no, Paul already left, but uh that was a, you know, pretty cool, I've been doing economic development fourteen, fifteen years now, um and I will say, getting a grant application to the federal government together for um a project like this in the matter of about two months from really, you know, team alignment to that thing getting submitted in grants.gov is extremely impressive, and so like appreciate the county uh and, and the other partners involved, but um not to spend as much time on this one, cause there's probably more familiarity.
We do have the ten o'clock tornado, is it tornado warnings today?
Test.
Test, it's a test, so, we would all be going into the safe, it's my understanding. She's, oh, I'm not going to safe.
This does not count as Luke's time.
Where are we going here?
Okay, I'm not going to safe. Okay, okay.
All right.
Keep going, I'm sorry.
So multimodal, so uh we were able to make a, a one-half million dollar request to EDA to support this project, so you know, roughly or near fifty percent of the overall cost for the development, um here's a visual, shared that um last commission meeting that presented the project, but um kind of the countdown to the application being submitted last week, we ended up having fifteen or sixteen private companies in a six-county area, including Cole County, uh that expressed interest, support in some, you know, kind of a firmer commitment of usage of a multimodal facility, uh when and if developed, uh so it was exciting to, you know, kind of see the interest and um the value that this project would bring, um and so look forward to uh hearing more back from the EDA here in about two months, three months, something like that, so. Uh kind of the, the next one in tying somewhat into the multimodal facility is, is the Hartland Port, um you know, I think, yeah, all three were at last week's meeting with American Patriot Holdings, but uh since the, you know, first uh quarterly kind of update on JC Rep, you know, there were a lot of board vacancies, there was um kind of a, a lot of things running many different directions, happy to have Harry running point as the chair of the Hartland Port Authority now, all board seats are full, um there had been grants, um old boards to the port authority uh for different purposes, of which um we're utilizing roughly, you know, less than two hundred thousand for additional uh engineering, but due diligence on the south side, so uh near the Missouri National Guard headquarters, uh to determine the feasibility of that site for a potential port location. You know, this is a long-term um economic asset that um I think there's, a lot of consideration has to be given into what's the, the best site, best location, it, it does have a high cost for development, but um could also be an extremely useful asset if, if the location and the infrastructure is correctly done, so uh we're continuing to um pursue or further determine the, the feasibility and the viability of the south side, um I think from the, the meeting, a big takeaway I had after uh the presentation from American Patriots last week was the, the need or critical access to rail being a vital component to their operation, so they are a container-on-bar, or container-on-vessel uh organization, that really is a trend in inland waterway uh movement of supplies, um I think there's challenges, obviously, in Missouri of, you know, the seasonality of utilization of the river, but um we're continuing to push forward on this, um I think we're close to getting final kind of approval from the state uh to access the site, I don't know if it's officially been given yet, uh but to allow the corps and the engineers to um really do what they need to do on the south side to further determine the feasibility, so Harry, I don't know if there's anything you wanna touch on the port as well?
No, I think you've covered it, Luke, uh we learned more about the Patriot folks last Monday, was that last Monday, last week, uh and as far as I know, those engineers will be getting on-site to do some elevation and some other issues, uh and I, I'm hoping that the uh authorization to be on the property and to release some numbers uh is coming from uh Office of Administration, if it hasn't already happened.
Yep, we're getting close, so it, it continued progress, um I think there's, there's also some additional sources and an increase in some of the budget items at the state level for uh infrastructure broadly speaking, but also um in the multimodal, which includes port authorities and, and rail and others, so continue to look at what resources are out there to help us, uh once a site is determined, continue to build out the infrastructure. Next, getting into broadband, so um you know, it's, it continues to be a topic of conversation, I think not just here, but around the entire state and around the country, I, I think the group probably knows my, my interest in, and also background in broadband, speaking from more the government side on how to um further deploy it around the state and unserved and underserved communities, i- in looking at what the, the governor's budget request laid out, um in the use of the ARPA funds, you know, the four hundred million for broadband for the state of Missouri is, is, is the high-level mark, but then there's many different specific categories within that, uh about two hundred to two hundred and fifty million is, is set aside for infrastructure, so actual fiber cable, you know, in the ground or strung up that goes to people's houses, uh but there's also you know, accessibility, capacity building, um you know, ways to help improve affordability, cell phone towers, there's a lot of different components that go into the broad four hundred million dollar for broadband, um and so what was really looking to do was figure out how can we um be in a position, Cole County, inclusive, so uh all the communities and individuals within Cole County, uh be able to access and utilize the state resources as they become available to address the local needs, um and the first step is to be able to clearly and accurately identify those needs, um that continues to be the struggle, the challenge, and really the inhibiting factor from addressing the problem uh more strategically, uh so have reached out to um, he was formerly the state broadband director here in Missouri that uh is with an engineering firm that focuses on telecom deployment and, and got some information and, and some rough numbers on what it would take to put together the analysis for building out our existing uh needs, a gap analysis, um as you can see, a lot of text on here, it gets pretty small, but uh really to provide the information that is the, the truth of what we do and don't have, so that we can supply and provide that to the existing provider network so that they can access or potentially access state, federal and other funds to actually build out these unserved and underserved areas. Right now, there's about seventy thousand dollars um with the Minmo Regional Planning Commission for planning purposes, for economic development, it was something that the EDA provided to the Regional Planning Commission, it's before my time here, but you know, a year, year and a half ago, um there was a broad outline of what those planning functions would be, and so we met a couple of weeks ago whenever I learned about funds, um and they felt that this would be a very good use and it would align with the EDA purpose of funds, so uh we're getting, we're seeking final approval from EDA uh to utilize those seventy thousand dollars for these planning purposes, um at which time it will tell us basically what is our current situation, um what would it take to address it, and it falls short of the final engineering cost, so um if we, if we do determine that there is an issue, there is a need, um and there is a, um an opportunity to address it, um there would be additional costs. a, an opportunity to address it, there would be additional costs to get the final engineering of, of meeting all of the future specification needs of these unserved and underserved areas. So, basically, it's going to say, here's the specific cost that it would take to serve each of these census blocks in providing them with XYZ level of service. So, it, it would become the, the final kind of like roadmap to addressing the issues.
You might want to talk to some of the school districts, because we, we have meetings with the schools, and we had that, what, a couple of weeks ago? And so, Russellville Superintendent, you know, we, Como, I know, had, had come into Russellville. They, they did not do anything with the surroundings. So, Perry said that, that there is no internet to speak of outside of Russellville. And then Eugene, I know, during COVID, they were having to put hotspots on buses and the kids were having to go. So, you know, one source that you might want to talk to are the school districts. Because they're, they're, it is, it's, it's not that it's inadequate, it's just not there.
Well, we've had meetings with them, guys, and right now, the tough thing is, the companies that want to supply the stuff really aren't talking, telling us jack.
Yeah.
Because they want to keep it all hidden, or they're trying to get into what markets and stuff, so it's not, it's not helped us at all either, but...
Well, Como has been in that area, but evidently...
Well, they're not going to make it to Debbie's house right away, but I think that's something to look at in the future is, okay, so now that they've made it this far, who's unserved? Where do we need to go with this?
Well, I would just say you might...
Is this going to be like a regular utility?
Yep.
And everybody's going to have to have electric, everybody's got to have their service, so...
And it's, so the, it, it is a high cost, and it doesn't, you know, pencil out for a provider in some of these areas where the, the person per mile is, is very small. So, the, the cost to maybe connect each of the houses, maybe it's, you know, $20,000 based on their build-out cost. And what, what they need is some way to subsidize the initial build-out. And right now, based on provider-built maps, which are what are utilized by the FCC, it shows basically Cole County and everything within it is served. And we know that that's not true. And so, what this would allow is a in-depth analysis, not just what somebody says is available marketing-wise at a speed that's marketed, but an actual test at-site locations to determine what can you actually get speed-wise specifically, so that you then have a map that you can then go to the federal, state, and other entities and request and very likely receive subsidy to serve these areas. But right now, I think everybody would agree, it, it doesn't make sense to subsidize somebody whenever the map, the only information that's available shows that it's already served. So, why, why, so you, you, you go away from just the rhetoric and you get the confirmed data. So, that's what this is hoping to build and provide for us.
Yeah.
And they're, they're a great group. I've worked with them for, you know, seven, eight years on broadband efforts around the state, and they're a leader in the Midwest that I feel that they have a good team in place that can help us really build this out. And I live in Eugene and I can tell you, I don't have broadband.
Yeah.
Do you have a good at your house, Sam?
Mm-hmm.
You do have good, okay.
Yes.
Because there's places in the middle of Jefferson City that you're not having good.
Oh, I know, I know. I had, I got my first call from one of Harry's constituents out off of Henwick. I'm not sure where, but anyway, it's, yeah, it's...
And so, it would probably be a three-month process, you know, primarily them doing a lot of stakeholder interviews. They would be interviewing with the broadband provider communities to understand what they have, but then also what are their projected developments that they're looking to do? Same thing that there's been the interviews with other providers in the community, you know, they'll talk about it, but they don't want to share a lot of information. This is an opportunity for them to actually draw it on a map, because otherwise, if it's not known, then it's going to be part of our plan to address. And so, we want to know what their build-out is going to be, but that's where the professionals can understand too, what exactly type of infrastructure they're going to put in the ground, where it's going to go, so that they, they actually understand what that equates to at a house, a business, a school, versus somebody just blanking, saying, yeah, we're going to provide that area. They can say where and how much, and so, looking forward to that engagement and ultimately trying to position the, the community in a place that we have what we need in order to access those state funds when those programs roll out later this summer.
Okay.
So, now, kind of shifting away from infrastructure and going more into the community development side, MSP, Missouri State Finnsentry Redevelopment Project is one that I've been intimately involved with since coming onboard, primarily, you know, wanted to share an update of where things stand today. There had been an issue, so, MSP, the land conveyance happened in 2018, conveying about 30 acres to Jefferson City from the state of Missouri. A developer, a hotelier, were, were chosen by the city and the state through a, I don't know the proper term, but a MSP redevelopment commission, in which time that that plan was chosen was following the tornado. So, the footprint of MSP changed after the conveyance due to the tornado. That group allowed the, the developer to propose a development that could extend beyond the bounds of that original conveyance. So, the, the developer did, which accompanied about two additional acres, which was the site of one of the existing facilities that, during the conveyance, was proposed to be maintained. After the tornado, it has to be torn down. So, it made sense to incorporate that, and based on where it sat, was an ideal kind of kickoff spot for MSP. So, what you see on here is, you know, I don't know, 2% kind of drawing of MSP, but what it begins to show is kind of the phase one of the development. Phase one being a hotel, a conference center, expo center, and parking structure. So, it's hard to see, but the red building, tallest one, hotel, it's the same hotelier as, and same developer that has the Broadway Hotel in Columbia with the rooftop bar on Broadway Street. To the east is the expo center, and then further, a little bit further to the east, built into the landscape, is parking structure. So, when, when the developer was chosen and that footprint and that plan was initially approved, then the next step was to gain access to those two additional acres from the state. Couple of months ago, that thing was kind of in gridlock, I'll say. So, spent some time working with some partners over at the state, and we are nearing, and I believe, at the next city council meeting, two weeks from yesterday, they are slated to approve an agreement with the state to gain access to those two additional acres. Probably be a long-term, like 99-year lease, but so excited to actually move that forward, because until you have that place, it's hard to do a development agreement and, you know, get everything locked in place. So, that is where it's been, been working with the state finance board on the parking structure, on a way to make that a feasible component of the project, because it's a tough thing, just everybody kind of understands parking structures to be. And so, working with the developer and their team on really the capital structure, but mainly focused on the parking structure for it. What was also, I'll say, somewhat slowing the conversation with the state was the state's interest in development at MSP as well. It came out in the governor's state of the state, his budget request, the consolidation of the state laboratories as a campus setting around the state health lab, which is just east of Chestnut Street on the MSP property. So, part of the conversation with the state right now is providing them some of the access back to the original conveyance, which is near the, the current state health lab for the campus of the lab. So, that's a 70, 80 million dollar capital investment that the state has proposed, the governor's proposed, that's in the ARPA bill, going through the House right now, or through the Senate, but which would be just east of Chestnut Street, but still in the footprint of the overall MSP. So, you know, I'll say, in, in understanding the timeline of where things have been and what's gone on, it felt like probably nothing was happening. I can tell you, there is progress, there is forward progress, it's all the, the critical things to ensure that it can actually happen, that aren't actually shovels in the ground or, you know, back goes digging, but it is forward progress that I think that there's a lot of momentum behind this right now. So, to me, exciting project, just can't wait for it to actually get started here. Questions on that one?
What is the timeline? There, we're, aren't we getting close to the deadline?
Midsummer was, you know, a deadline from the state, from the agreement on the conveyance to begin, I'll say, construction, but ultimately turn dirt. And then, with the EDA grants, so there was also a grant for infrastructure improvements to the site, I think that has a window that also coincides with later this summer. So, there will be, the, the start will be the initial infrastructure, but, you know, wanting to, my next step, so, for JC Rep, it's continuing to work with the developer and the, the city for the parking garage structure, also looking at potential ARPA uses at the state level and potentially local level to support and spur some of the development. What you can see with the, the dual roofs on the, what's kind of the northeast portion of the picture is the two sheets of ice that there was a feasibility study done on a few months back. You know, that's something that's been in discussions at the, you know, could there be an opportunity to attract some state ARPA funds to help support that development? So, you know, looking at the mass amount of resources that are flowing through the state, and, you know, as Harry mentioned, the Department of Economic Development, to see where we can bring as much of those funds into Jefferson City as possible, Cole County, so...
We get federal money from line, too.
Figure we're going to stop by the truck or the car and pick some up on the way out, too. In, in similar conversation and context, on the community development side is the sports complex, the soccer complex, that's being proposed out there off of Chrissy Drive along Highway 54. But to me, and what you've hopefully kind of see from the organization is not just waiting for, focused solely on, you know, business expansions, but what can we do to, you know, increase the infrastructure and assets of the community that would eventually lead to, you know, these industrial opportunities, but ultimately make it an improved livable community and increase some of the local revenues? There's a, there's a lot of research out there and there's a lot of information that supports tourism and sports tourism as a, you know, a high revenue and a high-impact type of investment. And so, been engaging with the, the group that's spearheading this soccer complex along Chrissy Drive, and, and so, there's already been in-kind contributions, there's been some private donations that have already gone towards this, but trying to finalize the capital structure for it to ultimately kick this thing off. What, to me, is interesting and also encouraging is, you know, even without this being built yet, the group was able to attract numerous soccer tournaments into Jefferson City, in the, in the region broadly speaking, this coming year, with the anticipation of this being built the following year and being available. So, utilizing the existing fields around town, we'll say, in lieu of this being developed, but there's a lot of support for tournaments to be located here. And I think just as another strong community asset, it just makes sense to continue to push this forward. Quickly on this one, workforce development, you know, I don't think it's any, anything new to anybody in here or around the state or country, is, you know, it's a challenge. It's always a challenge, right now is a huge challenge in trying to find and attract, you know, individuals, just, you know, live bodies, but then also folks with the right skillset. So, JC Rep partnered with the Jefferson City Chamber of Commerce to bring together somewhat of a coalition of, of entities that have vested interests and impact into the workforce efforts in the community. And we had a, we had a kickoff meeting about two weeks ago to really identify some of the key objectives of the coalition, what we should focus on, what we're looking to achieve. These were some of the starting points, it's, it's been refined quite a bit since then, but we are continuing to, you know, keep a pulse on how to address the issues right now, as well as into the future with workforce development. This, just wanted to, you know, I think there's familiarity among the group, but unfortunately, due to a, a meeting being scheduled on a Thursday in, you know, Missouri over the past month and a half, it, it got canceled because of snow. And, and we were supposed to be hosting Chief Standing Bear of the OSH Nation a couple of weeks ago, unfortunately had to be canceled twice, once due to a death in the tribe, and, and once due to the weather on a Thursday here. But looking at some opportunities to partner, they have a lot of interests in mid-Missouri, you know, take away the casino conversation and think about it more historically, they, they've had a presence here, they were, you know, a strong community here at one point in time. And so, the chief and his team have a lot of interests of understanding what we're doing here in mid-Missouri, and seeing if there's opportunities to partner down the road. So, looking forward to hosting the chief here in the next few weeks, date is yet still to be determined, kind of wanted to wait until, we, we thought the weather was actually going to move away from, from winter time. Sounds like it's another chance of it coming this week. And finally, on the business development side, so kind of the traditional economic development that people think of from an industrial side, kind of some of the outcomes that, you know, whether we've had a hand to play in it or not, what we're trying to do is increase these opportunities, increase these successes, but also, how can we help them so that there's more of them, but when these opportunities present themselves, how can we try and capture as much benefits for them to encourage that development and beyond? So, we've got two active projects that have, you know, successfully submitted information and been approved, or, I don't know if the approval has been submitted yet, but you can kind of see the amount of state benefits being provided to, you know, the top two based on their new capital investment and new payroll that would be generated. So, all untold of those three projects, about 200 new jobs and, you know, little over a million dollars in state incentives to support their developments. But, you know, to me, what's, what's the most kind of interesting, important piece is, you know, these companies can probably say, we would create twice, three times that amount of jobs if we had the people. So, workforce is a challenge, and so, we're, we're going to work through that. These jobs are tied exactly, directly to that capital investment. If you said, in general, how many people would you take, that first one would probably be closer to 300 instead of 75. That 75 is just to support that $4 million new payroll, or that $15 million capital investment. But they have a backlog of, of jobs they're trying to fill. So, I, to me, jobs, you know, isn't necessarily the most critical component right now. Seeing the capital investment and investing into the community just shows their, their commitment, long-term interest to invest into the area in which, to me, that, you know, shows their intent to be here long-term. And so, working to identify any infrastructure, workforce, or other needs or challenges to best support those. In addition to those, we have two other existing business meetings this week for projected expansions, so, a lot of good activity, still using code names, just because they're not ready for kind of public awareness yet, but very close, as you can see from potential announcement dates or timeframes. And that was the last one. So, I, I tried my best and I got it down to 30 minutes of the tornado drill.
Yeah, we had an hour and a half the other day, so I knew it was going to be hard to pare it down, but we had COVID, so there wasn't a whole lot going on then. Probably five or 10 years prior to that, or even... Probably five or 10 years prior to that or even longer, it seemed like we were just in survivability mode. So it's, I just thought it was good, seeing all this, that we're trying to succeed and conquer and do things. I'm big on the sports thing because we bring people to town to do those activities. They also, they'll sleep, shop, do a lot of other things, spend their money here. Seems like this area doesn't want to grow. And we need to, I mean, it's gonna have to grow some, but right now, if you talk to the housing, to Jefferson City area building realtors, there's no housing out there available. And right now, that's the good thing about the sports venues is we're not really increasing anybody here, but we, we're able to come in and, instead of our people going to other places and spend their money. So I just, I don't know, I just thought it was good that you came in and I don't know when you were scheduled for the next quarterly report, but we can just, yeah.
And I, I think to that point, too, it's, you know, there, I think previously, historically, however far back you want to go, decades ago, how you built the economies, a lot of times you, you would focus on how can you, how can you get an industry to come here, be here, grow here? And then ultimately, people, they, they travel, they, they move to the area to find and seek employment. I think there's been, there's, there is definitely a shift in that. And, and what we're, we're looking for is how, how do we increase population? How do we increase the opportunities, the assets here so that businesses and industries will be here, but ultimately because of the community we are? Community with the people, with the assets, with the infrastructure, with...
But which one comes first? Do you have the jobs here to get them here, or do you have the people here for the jobs or for the industries that come here to employ?
If I ask the question, so if I had to, if I put a billboard on the highway and market the area, if, if you said, you know, I have land available and, you know, industry will give it away, does that attract people here or an industry here? If you said, I have 5,000 qualified people that are ready to work here, that, that is your marketing tool. That, that's how you grow is through people. In, in order to have people, you have to have a strong community. And so that's where the infrastructure, schools, housing, public safety, all of those are key components to successful economic development. But it's, to me, it's the community that can drive the economic activity versus the industry that's going to then attract those other things. They, they're a core component, but without the people and the community, they can't survive here.
So, and then back to the sports, the soccer thing is just one thing that's kind of risen to the top because somebody got behind it and has been pushing it and has other private funding behind it. And Christie and I have talked in private before about things, and look, we've been talking about it, you get somebody that can build a Butler Building and do archery tournaments, basketball, volleyball, I mean, it's everybody, they're going out of town on the weekends and taking their money elsewhere.
There's not enough gym space. I mean, you can rent it on a nightly basis just for practices, but tournaments, look at the Cape Girardeau Sports Center, it had two indoor soccer fields and 12 volleyball courts when we were there for a weekend. They said there were 600 teams there. That brings a lot of money into your community.
Yep, exactly.
And we're, we're missing a huge opportunity.
And it, it's funny because if you talk to people, even just the new strikers and just how much excitement there is in, you know, my son was there for a birthday party on Sunday, and, and it's one of those things where if not for, it would have been somewhere else. And so, you know, what can we do to keep those dollars here as well bring new dollars in? Because sometimes it's not even just attracting the outside, it's just keeping what we have from going somewhere else.
Well, the ice skating rinks, there are no ice skating rinks between Kansas City and St. Louis. I mean, we're right here in the middle of the state, so.
We're going to St. Louis for a model tournament this year.
Yep.
Yeah, it's, sports is, we, we take sports seriously around here.
Luke, when did you say the project energy, if that was the one at the top of the page, when that announcement could be?
Looking at May.
Okay.
I, I gotta say, too, that, that, prior to coming here, prior to being with J.C. Rep as a, you know, a local person, but I, I've always had an eye on that one just in, you know, from a, I'll say of just concern of the, where that company may go. It's not locally owned, it's not, you know, it's a larger corporation, so, you know, they're not as tied, invested into the community per se. And so with the challenges, to me, that was exciting to see their, their new capital investment into their location, so.
That, that...
I'm sure more ones can speak more broadly about who it is.
The average payroll is over, it's like $53,000?
Yep. As you can tell by the total payroll, less jobs than the one below it that had more jobs, but basically the same payroll.
Right. The other one's about 40.
Yep. Something didn't mention, but, you know, as far as the ARPA is concerned as well, so last Friday, there was a call with ARPA, State Department of Economic Development, talked through their rolling out of the ARPA programming that Harry mentioned earlier. And then I had a scheduled call with the guy that's implementing or structuring those programs later on and kind of talked through, you know, things that are happening around this area and approaches to accessing those funds. You know, some critical things are, you know, prioritizing and aligning local efforts so that it's, at certain times, there's a lot of buckets of funding, but they're gonna be looking at, has the community aligned around priorities? And, and I said among the city and county on, you know, are there opportunities to discuss ways to stretch the dollars further by being aware and aligned with one another? Doesn't mean always working on the same things, and sometimes it means not working on the same things, but in certain areas, maybe it's a stronger application if it is a partnership among the two. And so did meet with the city last week and was going to try to request some time to do a similar conversation with the county and ultimately try to pull the two groups together, so.
Okay.
What, what they're doing with the RFI at the state is they're, with, you know, 700 or so million dollars worth of different kind of programming, they're trying to understand the, the amount of applications that they may be receiving and the types of requests that may come in. And so this, theirs is not an application at all, it's just to truly to understand the intent that's out there so that they can better structure some of their guidelines and program structure. And then it would actually be open for application probably in July timeframe for those programs, so.
We talked for a half hour after your meeting the other day, so I, I can keep this going, but has anybody else got any questions? I don't want to hold everybody else up. I just, there's a lot going on around here and it's, it's good to see.
You're doing a good job. You just need some pictures in your office.
I'll try and put some in.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
All right. Thank you all.
Any questions? Okay. Do we have any other issues to come before us?
Do we need to figure out what we want to do with the backup electricity generator for the health department? Because I thought we talked about doing...
I thought we did, too, but I think Greg might need a little direction on what bids you would like him to get. He got one, which I understand is just for the vaccine room, which if we're gonna do the vaccine room, we also have to include the server because that's where the alarm system and...
That's what I thought we talked about.
We had a power outage, well, I thought so, too, but then the email he sent said it was just the vaccine room, and that's not enough because of the...
He's getting bids. He's getting bids on one to do the whole building. He's getting, yeah, I think...
But we didn't even talk about doing the whole building. I thought what we talked about was we'll start one barebone for the vaccine, the servers minimal that we can have to where it doesn't just jack stuff up. And then go to where we could keep some, maybe one side of the building in operation if we had to. That's just what I remember, but then he said he's getting one for the whole building.
I mean, it would hurt to just look at all three options just to see what could be done.
Yeah, I even asked him if we could do...
Minimum, I agree, needs to be those two.
You're not gonna want to do the whole building. I don't think so.
Well, he said that'd be probably about $170,000 for the generator.
Stop getting bids and bid it out. Because that's not fair.
Do a formal bid.
Yes. If it's gonna cost that kind of money, there needs to be a formal bid out there.
Not just calling around people.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Whichever, I just...
That's where you want to get an idea. Are we looking at 150,000 or are we looking at 15,000? And how far, or how much do we plan on spending? What's our max that we can spend?
He said the one to do the, the vaccine server is gonna be roughly $40,000. So we're not gonna get...
So I agree, I don't want the bids.
But did that include the server room? Because his email back just said vaccine room.
Yeah, I was talking to him this morning, so.
Okay.
Either way, you're over the bid limit unless you have a cooperative that you're gonna pick the cost of.
But we can still talk to people and say, what, what, give us an idea. We can go to talk to Eric and say, okay, give us an idea what it's gonna cost us. That's not a bid. That's just, hey, here's something, get you an idea, do you want to proceed or not? You know, we looked at the price tag on Plan B for the parking garage, said, nope, it's out of where we want to go. So that's what I'm looking at. I don't need a firm bid from him, just give me an idea.
I, I think that should be, I think Greg should have that by next week.
Okay.
But we need to tell him which way to go. Give us an idea for the whole building or for...
That's what he's doing.
But I wasn't talking about the whole building.
Well, I know, but he's getting, he's getting...
He's wasting his time getting it for the whole building and mine, isn't it? But if you want to do it for the whole building and...
No.
We can figure that's the max.
That's it just come up. That was just...
But we never said to do that. So that's why I'm trying to give him better direction, because he has not communicated with us that he didn't really have direction. I can go back and listen to the meeting and see what exactly we said. I can't tell you verbatim, but I was pretty sure we had a barebones and then barebones plus part of the building to be able to keep it functioning in case of emergency. But not the whole buil-, the whole building's gonna be substantial.
Yeah, it is.
So if you want him to do a whole building and you know it's between that price and the other...
No, I don't. I just told him to get, get bids on everything.
Well, we want to get bids, just get an idea.
So it was, it was, that was, one of the suggestions was to do the whole building, so I said, just do the whole building. I think, I don't know if that came from the health department, but...
The sheriff recommended that.
Yeah, and so it's just, just get all the bids.
So then you're gonna bid it out? Or you're getting an estimate?
I think we're gonna have to bid it out. We're gonna have to. We can get an idea, but we're gonna have to do the formal bid process.
Right, I understand that, but if you're, he's saying he's getting bids right now, he's not getting bids.
He's getting an idea.
Yeah.
Then we'll have to do a formal bid process.
I think he was getting an actual bid.
I'm afraid he is, so that's why.
That's where I see him going with it right now, so we either say, give us an idea...
I was trying just to get prices. Okay, anything else?
What do we decide?
Should we, should we go ahead and publish our request?
I think so, and you can have alternative A is just these two rooms, alternative B is the whole building, maybe C is just half of it.
Let's go ahead and do a, a, let's do it, a formal bid. You advertise, the Cole County Commission is accepting bids, blah, blah, blah.
Jessica handle it and we'll give you those options.
We're only gonna have a meeting with her and Christie and decide, give them plenty of direction on this, because C is the, the whole enchilada, A is the server and a couple of rooms and the vaccine fridge. B is a whole bunch of stuff in the middle. So, you know, what kind of toppings do you want on it? Or do you draw it up?
I just think it might depend on how our system, current system is laid out.
So do you need Joe's office, no offense against Joe, but do you need our onsite wastewater inspections to be lit up if there's some kind of other emergency happening temporarily? At that point, we're probably not worried about inspecting those.
No, they can go, they can work from home.
Maybe a discussion with Brian about which IT systems may get to where you can still work versus not work. I mean, what, what items do you have to have versus what's not?
Right, because we have like breaker boxes and IT systems in three different locations, so.
Okay. I don't think it's as easy just telling Greg to get A and C.
Right, I agree. Yeah, Brian needs to probably be in on the discussion.
Okay.
Okay, I'll get Jessica to get all the powers to be together to work on it.
Perfect.
Okay.
Yeah, because Jessica's gonna be sitting there going, what the hell you guys get me into?
Right. I think our building's complicated, because I think it was added on, too. I don't think it was just...
Have we got anybody signed up for them classes that we...
I just got the list released yesterday where there's an...
What?
About buying the forum because my link is not working.
I just want to make sure we're using those and...
I didn't hear you say on the radio how wonderful the commissioners are to work.
That was behind the scenes, I told them after you guys were... Real quick, I, our Parks Department met with Christie and her staff last week about the landscaping and tree maintenance. We think we want to do a little bit of landscaping work out there. We also have Pranger. When we put together this Parks Department, we didn't include the cost to do the landscaping, just the maintenance, so additional mulch and landing. So we don't have any prices right now. We're gonna, J.C. Parks is gonna help us lay something out at, at the Health Department and they'll come to you with a...
Would you want to use the master gardeners to do some places and shrubs and stuff?
Well, and we have a couple Eagle Scouts that have some projects to do, so we thought we would, you know, see if they could help out, either with a bench or whatever, but...
Why don't we put a bicycle path through there, too?
Like, go ahead.
Roll that into the driveway.
Right.
That was sarcasm, you missed it. Far over your head.
How about, so, yeah, I think that when that mulch was put in the beds, it was like three years ago when they took down the tree, so it's all a little bit tired. And there was bushes out front and they got ripped out, so there's really nothing, so...
We'll have a plan to kind of spruce things up a little bit, but it's gonna come at a little bit of a cost, so we just didn't want to blindside you with a couple thousand here and there, so. But we're, we're meeting with all the different department, facility departments or...
And it's good, because that's when they're like, ooh, your driveway parking lot's looking a little bit like any...
We don't want y'all not looking forward to going to work, we want y'all to come in looking at some pretty flowers.
Exactly.
Well, some of the...
Happy to show up.
Yeah.
As well as the courthouse.
Might take where the flowers...
We need to remotes the courthouse, too.
You have a face you're...
Debbie, you're in charge of the pots in front of the building here.
Correct. Pots.
Yeah.
So just wanted to let you know that that's something we're, we'll come to you with a proposal of some sort.
When you go on, when you go on the radio, Christie, you need to tell, tell Austin and John and Hal how wonderful we are.
I did that when I went to the city the other day.
I know, well, I'm just, I'm just picking on Eric, because, you know, I bragged about our, our employees, which Hal mentioned, but...
They probably cut that part, right?
They did, yeah.
Motion to go into recess until 4:30.
Second.
All in favor?
All right. Sam, you were the one trying to get out of here, now...
I don't think so. Just got the garage. Like the reason some of it... DHS has changes that they require. We might have extra money.
Hey, I thought it was a good presentation, was that the other one, so if I invited you to...